Right. Welcome, everybody, to the December 14th Planning Board Meeting. We have four of our members currently on the call. That would be Justin Allen, Chris Drew, and Brian Malali. Brian, can you hear us? Give him a minute to get settled there. So Gabe, we have a few things to go through tonight. I figured we could start with checking a few of them off the list, but we sent off a copy of the minutes from our last meeting. And I'm looking for any feedback or a motion to accept them. That was for 11-9.
Sorry, I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of November 9.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
They look good. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brian, are you there? All right, Gabe, why don't you give us a rundown of what we have tonight? And then we can, we can kind of take them in order. We can't hear you.
He's muted.
Sorry, we have quite a bit on the plate tonight. If you, if everyone here has seen the agenda, we have two different applications in the works. One for a discussion, one in a more formal stage of 18 Prospect Street and 226 Main Street. We'll be discussing the shared planner proposal from CMRPC, which has moved along a little bit. Lincoln Barber, who is the Millville Building Commissioner, has to be on the agenda this evening. And we'll continue the discussion of the Carriage Estate 1 matter. And then we'll also be talking about the solar bylaw, updates on Memorial Park. And then I have a couple of updates and any news of pending applications.
Sounds good. Let's, as I saw, I think Brian's having some trouble, so I don't want to get into too many things that we need to vote on until we can make sure that he can hear us. I see that we have Richard Hurtu. Why don't we, why don't we have Richard? Go ahead.
Good evening, Pam. I received an email from Gabe telling me that you had instructed him for me to attend this meeting. So I wasn't sure what you wanted to discuss. The only things I have are correspondence that I've sent to the board. One of them, November 3rd, by my attorney. Still haven't received a response on that. A few other emails that I've sent, waiting for a response. So I don't know if you want to address those issues or is that something you have to discuss with town council?
No, I mean, we can invite you on right now. We invited you onto the meeting tonight because I believe one of your last emails was asking to be on our November meeting, but the agenda had already been sent. And the email, the meeting that we had scheduled later in the month was not able to happen. So we wanted to invite you on tonight in case you had any questions. I know that you have reached out about the release of the bond. I can speak a little bit to that, other than, you know, we've had, town council has advised us to that it can't be released until the outstanding invoices are paid. And I think I had, we got a copy of at least one of them, and Gabe forwarded that along. It has, was in relationship to the title search. Is, that was correct, Gabe, right? That was the one we sent over?
I only received, I mean, I can forward another. If, I have to check my records. This may have been quite a bit ago, but I did, I did receive an invoice at the Town Hall offices, I think regarding the fire station, which was addressed to Mr. Hurtu. But I sent that along to him and I passed it along to a different person, since he's no longer involved in the.
Right, that invoice from Andrew's Engineering was the engineering work done at the Millville Veterans Memorial Park. And that was sent to me because when that service was done, I was chairman. So I forwarded back to you, Gabe, to be forwarded to, I believe Mr. Hadley is now the chairman of that board.
Yeah, I forwarded that to him already. If there's another invoice you'd like me to send to Mr. Hurtu, that was the only one that I received physically in the offices. But I'm happy to send it along.
I'll double check through. I thought that I had seen that something got forwarded over to you and I related to title search. And it said, can you please forward this on to Richard?
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look for that after the meeting.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
So from my, my understanding, Richard, it's, it's the title search in a related invoice that needs to be taken care of.
Okay. Again, the letter that was sent by my attorney November 3rd, asking for a copy of that law that states that expenses incurred with title search or whatnot is to be deducted from the security bond that's posted for completion of the road. It didn't state legal fees or title search. So I believe he was requesting a copy of that law that allows the town to do that. Also, another letter that I sent was, having been on a planning board for some 33 years, and also being at the meeting for the release of Carriage Estates 2, I don't remember there were any expenses deducted from that bond release. And I requested a copy of that also. So if that can be forwarded to me, I would appreciate it.
All right, we'll make a note of these two items and follow up with you. Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Richard.
All right, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Brian, can you hear us now?
I got you now.
All right. Fantastic, we can.
Okay.
All right. I think we have Lincoln Barber on.
You do.
Hey, Lincoln, how are you?
I'm fine, and yourself?
Pretty good.
I might take up a few minutes if you have other things you want to get out of the way.
We've got all kinds of things tonight, so it seems like a good time to start.
All right, I have a short list here. Hopefully, I'll keep it brief. Number one on my list is in 1968, excuse me, 2018, jump forward 40 years here. Town of Millville passed a zoning map change at the annual town meeting. It was done to change the line on a small section of commercial zoning on the north side of Lincoln Street. And that was passed and approved by the AG's office. I had, in the space of about a month, two separate land surveyors contact my office in regards to two of the, I believe it's five lots that had the line changed in them with proposed building permit applications. And it was only because I was fairly well involved in that zoning change and I knew it had taken place. The zoning map in Millville has never been updated. It's not noted at the Registry of Deeds. You have professional surveyors issuing certified plot plans that are incorrect. And I don't know who pays for it and how it happens, but our zoning map needs to be updated to reflect that change. Are you guys familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I remember when that happened. I'm trying to, I am trying to think back. And I don't know if Brian or Chris remembers this at all. I do thought I remembered Sarah, our previous planner, Sarah, working on getting the zoning maps updated at one point. So either of you remember that?
I don't, to be honest.
I do remember that. I don't know where it went. Obviously, it never came to fruition.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a note of this, Lincoln, and we'll follow up with, with CMRPC. Maybe you can help us figure out maybe where we're at in that process. I do think that CMRPC was involved at one point. It might have just been in getting the maps updated themselves. But maybe we could advise us on where we're at and what steps we need to take to move forward.
Sure thing, I can, I can follow up on that.
I left a copy of the change that was certified by the town clerk on the.
And we'll follow up with, with CMRPC. Maybe you can help us figure out maybe where we're at in that process. I do think that.
What's happening here?
I don't know, I'm hearing myself.
Someone should put themselves on mute.
Where we're at and what steps we need to take to move forward.
Sure thing, I can, I can follow up on that.
I left a copy of the change that was certified by the town clerk on the.
All right, it sounds like it got fixed.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is, I have had a running, very sporadic dialogue that is not going away about ground-mounted solar and ground battery storage for solar energy. I'm looking from my code book here while I'm talking to you. There is a, a building code just for energy storage systems. There's a large tract of land on the north side of Thayer Street. It sits in the outlying residential district. It's 40-plus acres. Been floating around with a lot of different ideas on it for a long time. I was told 20-some-odd years ago it had a dirty title, and that's the only reason houses had never been built on it. But I don't know that to be factual. And the recent inquiries have been from a professional engineer. And today, I fielded one from a solar company. They proposed to put multiple small, small being less than the kilowatt rating that's in the Millville zoning bylaw for the energy overlay district, which I believe was 25 KW, so that it doesn't fall within the special permitting process. And therefore, it doesn't have anywhere near the, you know, planning oversight that we would get if they were in that. And then in addition to that, battery storage, which I have been to some training on, and it's kind of benign as long as it works. And when it doesn't, it turns into a terrible meltdown, an uncontrollable fire, which they just stand back and try and keep from spreading. So I think that when you do some planning, it might be a good idea to learn a little bit more about solar and try and include some wording in the bylaw that anticipates this kind of use. I'm involved constantly in people reading the rules and then trying to figure out, how can I avoid the rules? And the proposal that came to me, which was very vague, and I've been pointed in making them be more specific, was intentionally planned to avoid as much oversight and scrutiny as possible. Obviously, if you're talking about developing that piece of land, which has a lot of wetlands, and it's a strictly commercial enterprise in a residential zone, there would be a site plan review process. Chapter 48, Section 3 of Mass General Law specifically states that you cannot zone or prohibit the development of alternative energy resources. So like it or not, I have nothing in the building code for this. And I've been buying some code books and reading. And it's one of those technologies that's emerging. It's a lot bigger than other parts of the country. This same tract of land, they also proposed putting in a large hemp grow, which is not pot, it's commercial hemp or whatever they use that for. So there's three different commercial enterprises on a residential piece of land, all tailored to avoid zoning with agricultural use, solar use, and solar energy storage. And I have no rules to go by, folks.
Gotcha.
I'm just waking us up. And I know you could spend a ton of time on this. But it'd be nice if we could all work together and try and have a little bit of tools and guidelines to go with when things like this come in.
I think that makes a lot of sense, Lincoln. We can certainly add that to the, the list of bylaw updates and whatnot that we are and have been looking at. Gabe, maybe you can help us find some guidance with maybe what other towns our size have on the books for topics related to this would be probably a nice place to start.
Yeah, so the Sarah Adams, who previously was helping out, she actually has a lot of experience with solar. So yeah, Lincoln, I, when, when you initially asked about this, you know, basically, since we can't restrict solar, you can't restrict alternative energy if there's not a bylaw regarding a certain size. It like, yeah, it puts you in a pickle. But I can reach out tomorrow to people at CMRPC and see if, if anyone with more expertise on this would be willing to take a look at this. And we could also look into maybe getting DLTA funding to start a process for a sort, like a more comprehensive solar bylaw, something along those lines.
It's, it's not so much to restrict. It's just to be involved in a process so that whatever is developed works for the neighbors, works for Millville, maybe generates a little income. And it just isn't some monster out of control that we wish we'd put a little more in upfront so that we didn't feel like we were getting dragged down the street kicking and screaming, you know? And the whole idea of, of putting in multiple small ones to avoid any special permitting process, you know, so you put one in at 22 this year and another one in at 23 next year. And before you know it, you got 100 KW. And the whole thing should have been planned.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
I agree. And especially if you're starting to see more things come in like this. I think the whole board could probably be used to get a little more educated on the topic anyway. So looking into this further would be useful.
Well, whenever you get, Millville has a few of them, pieces of land that for one reason or another aren't able to have houses put on them. Smart people start thinking about, well, how can I generate an income off of that piece of land? And if we haven't thought about it, then they're driving the bus instead of Town of Millville. I hear bylaws repeated here more than once. So I'm going to take the opportunity to say for the umpteenth time, Town of Millville bylaw for signs is really poorly worded. I have a difficult time with it. I've been to court twice in the last year where, I won't say I was embarrassed, but I will say that I had a very difficult time justifying the decisions I'd made when an attorney was sitting on the other side and he was reading the bylaw. Even if it's just as simple as going through and taking the word permitted or permitted and substituting in allowed on half of those would be a huge improvement over what we have and something that could be accomplished, I would think, in an hour and put before the town at the next town meeting.
Yeah, Lincoln, that, that is one that's been on our list. And before we lost our last town planner, that's what we were working on. We had put all of the bylaws related to signage together. We've done exactly what you said, which is change out the word permitted for allowed in all of those places where the, the wording was confusing and subject to interpretation. And then we were looking at a few other pieces that we felt had been omitted in some of that bylaw language. And I'll be honest, in, in everything that's been going on without a planner, that has not been something that we've picked back up just yet. But it wouldn't be a difficult lift for us to get that prepared for May.
There's one guy I've had trouble with since the beginning. And I don't know, hopefully, we can get to it. I'd be happy to sit down with you if you want. I do have a copy of your proposed change.
Okay.
So the last thing I have is special permitting. I, I had three people come into my office this year that wanted to apply for a special permit for an accessory apartment, an in-law apartment, if you will. And I steered all of them to the planning board. You went through COVID-19 about 16 different planners in a relatively short time. And all of them made it through the process, some a little easier than others. The, the thing that I want to discuss is the fact that it refers to in, in your guidance in the, in the zoning bylaw about the fact that other departments and boards in town have the opportunity to go through the application and offer some comments or an opinion or guidance or say, hey, we looked at it and we're fine with it. And the applicants are required to submit, I believe, 12 copies of their application, which gives you the ammunition to hand around to those different boards and departments. But I haven't seen that in my department. And on one of them that I've had quite a bit of extra work on, I asked other departments and none of them had seen it. So the town wasn't able to avail themselves of the opportunity of these different departments that have a dog in the fight, if you will, about, about what happens in some specific instances. The most recent one that comes to mind is this commercial development up on 196 Central Street, where I called the fire department about the location of the building in relation, in relation to the lot line, because they wouldn't be able to drive around it. And they said, no, we never saw this. And yes, we may have a problem with that. Turns out, they didn't. But they appreciated the opportunity to review it and say something before I issued a building permit. I sent something to Brian about groundwater that was mentioned in the plan and a detention or retention basis, basin. And he said, no, I'm all set with that. And then I approached the Board of Health about a 2,000-gallon tight tank, which is supposed to be for runoff from vehicles that are pulled inside the building and either washed or it's, you know, dripping from the undercarriage, what, what have you. And they weren't aware of that at all. And no, it's not part of the septic system. But is there a concern as far as groundwater or anything else is? So a little better communication with the rest of the town might be helpful. We were very fortunate in this instance that none of those issues were going to be, you know, contentious. And all the departments were happy with, with the outcome, even though they didn't get a chance to participate in the process. The individuals get a special permit. It's never forwarded to me. I don't know what rules and stipulations you put on it. One of the applicants for the accessory apartment was pretty upset that they had an issue with their septic system and the number of bedrooms created. And that's not a planning board issue. And I tell people, hey, you know what? Not everyone's qualified to run one of these things from the beginning to the end. And you might want to hire a professional to represent you with the planning board. But their impression was, I gave 12 copies. One of them should have gone to Board of Health if there was an issue with my additional bedroom and I didn't have enough capacity in the system. Why wasn't that brought up at the time? It's not a planning issue so much as it is, it's a comprehensive Town of Millville servicing the applicants so that when they get to me and want a building permit, I'm not always the bad guy that says, hey, you got to do this and this and this that weren't addressed in the special permitting process. A little bit of open dialogue and communication would go a long way. And I have asked since Hillary was here and sent letters to the board and never had any kind of cooperation on these special permits. When I first started here, there was a special permit that came in. And at the behest of the town administrator at the time, I did a bunch of research and found out that very, very few of the businesses in Millville had ever applied for, never mind received a special permit. And of the ones that had, I could only find one that had recorded that special permit in the Registry of Deeds. So there were many that were granted over the years. None were recorded except for one.
So about the communication between departments, I 100% agree with you. I think we need to be doing a better job at that. We, in the past two years, we've had a permanent planner for about six months of it. And, and that has been a challenge for us. I will, I will not even try to excuse it. But it has been a, it has been a challenge. In the last few months, I know getting in to distribute the mail properly has been a challenge as well because we're, we're kind of moving contract to contract with CMRPC's services as we continue to figure out how we're going to find a, a permanent planner. But this is something that I know has kind of been frustrating for all of us. So I agree with you. And we will do our best to fix that moving forward and make sure that that's an important piece of when we bring on a new planner, those discussions.
I, I have a suggestion, and it's none of my business. But when I was on the board back in the 80s, we had a secretary. She received a stipend and did a fair amount of paperwork and mailings and communication that enabled the board to have a presence and not put the burden of that paperwork on the individual board members. It's certainly not a planner, but it might enable you to function a little better while you're trying to establish this, you know, full, part-time planner or hopefully regionalized with some other towns.
Yeah, that's definitely actually something we're going to talk about tonight as well, as, as we try to figure out some of how we can move forward getting a planner. But it's become incredibly apparent that, that we need some kind of help with that, exactly what you're talking about, moving the paper along and making sure it gets to the right places and placing the ads and processing the paperwork, so.
Well, I appreciate your time. That's what I wanted to talk about. And anytime you want to get a little outside input on zoning and, and how I end up dealing with it, I'm happy to participate.
Yeah, well, we'll be happy to invite you to our meetings. And we'll definitely be following up sooner than later on the, the bylaws sign. And we'll include you in our discussions about, and, and our educational process on, on the small-scale solar.
Yeah, don't forget that zoning map.
Yep, and the zoning map.
It, it has a real big impact on most of those people because it changed their frontage requirement and it changed their square footage requirement. And depending on the lot and the intended use, it has a huge financial impact on them. And depending on the lot and the intended use, it has a huge financial impact on them.
Yeah, I can understand that.
There aren't that many lots, but those that were. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. What else do we have here tonight with us, Gabe?
Eighteen Prospect Street and two two six Main Street. So I believe there should be someone from each of those here. We have eighteen Prospect Street listed first.
All right, eighteen Prospect Street. Are you here, Rocco?
Yes, we're here.
Okay. How are you guys doing tonight?
Hi, how you doing?
Thanks for having us.
So what we're trying to accomplish here is we have a special permit that we had taken on in February. And what we're trying to accomplish is a minor modification to the special permit. At the time we took the special permit, it was for a multitude of reasons because we didn't know what we were doing in the building. Since then, we've actually modified and restored and refurbished the building. And we are fortunate enough to meet up with Lifted Luxury, that's Cassie and Alt, and we've signed a lease with them. So when we originally did the special permit, we didn't include the marijuana uses that we need today because we didn't have a clue that we would go down that path. So what we're looking to do is to include the marijuana uses in the special permit, just modified a special permit. And in addition to that, we wanted to incorporate a drive-through for the building to limit the traffic that would be on the road for their their store that they have.
All right. And that's what we have in front of us today are these applications for minor adjustments?
Yes.
Both the site plan and to the special permit.
Correct.
And Gabe, do you have anything to add on on this? On these modifications, are they, do they fall under what we typically see as minor?
Um, I would I I would leave that up to the board in in your opinion, but I mean, I I see nothing that stands out to me.
All right. And Gabe, can you refresh my memory for minor approve, minor approval? We did not have to hold a public hearing for this? Or is that what we're deciding today that we're going to, that we would be okay with moving forward and then we would go down that road of of hosting a public hearing and whatnot?
I don't believe you have to hold them. Yeah, you shouldn't have to hold a hearing for a minor modification. But I will, I will double check that.
That's correct. You do. You do not have to, Gabe. At least that's what I've seen in the past.
This has been, I know the talk's been with the Board of Selectmen. What has their take been on this?
I'm sorry.
All right. So we have entered into our host agreement and submitted our application. So it was a unanimous vote. They are completely in support of our project. Where, just so you guys know where we are in the part of what we're doing, the Cannabis Control Commission is running our background checks right now. They've accepted our application as complete. I don't know if you guys are aware, but we are submitting our application for expedited review because we are a woman-owned entity. So we're getting licensed with the Supplier Diversity Office right now. And we should have that certificate at the same time as provisional approval. From what I hear from some of the vendors that we're linking up with, since they're running our background checks, like, we should be probably on one of the next agenda meetings. They're not having one for December, so we're thinking January. And we're kind of working in the background to get everything ready. So this was just one of our final steps.
And one of the things that we've done in the past with the regards to the special permit is we did have the public meeting and actually, we had a meeting for the public to meet Lifted Luxury and ourselves at the site. And that was after the host agreement was drawn up and signed by the town.
Yeah, it was really nice to see a bunch of our neighbors show up. And everybody that's directly abutting us is happy to have us in town.
Was that, did that that happened in October, correct?
Um, yes, I believe that was in October.
Oh, yeah, I think I communicated with you regarding that. Yep.
I think it was just barely November.
So what we're looking for tonight is approval to add the uses and modify the site so that we can move forward with Lifted Luxury's plan.
When you say a drive-through, how do you plan on entering and exiting that?
Well, Brian, I can try to share my screen with you. Let's see what I can do here. What damage I can do.
I wouldn't have any idea how to do that. So you're better than I am, Rocco.
Here we go. All right. Can anybody see my screen?
No.
No.
I think whoever's working this for Millville Cable Access, if you could grant access to Rocco.
Access is granted, but I'm, so I'm trying to figure out why it's not working too.
Okay, thank you.
So do you know the property as far as like a visual, if I walk you through how we're kind of expecting we could control traffic with this? So if you're coming in on on Hope Street would be the entrance. We're we're also occupying ten Prospect Street. So, oh, sorry. Yeah. If you come in on Prospect Street, then you would enter in like the far of the of ten and you would just kind of loop around. So it would make a big like U. So we would keep the traffic off of the road. And then anyone that wanted to go into our customer parking lot would be able to do a loop around. Because we're trying to keep as much much traffic off of the street as possible.
So you're coming in on Prospect and exiting on Prospect?
So either people, because there's the nice loop around the through the neighborhood, we could direct them either way. And we'll be doing this with people in the parking lot. For obviously, as we're opening, people are getting used to it. We're going to have people directing traffic and making sure that everybody's comfortable. But we want to make sure that, you know, we have proper signage.
So I'm gonna just be ignorant here. You're
No, it's okay.
When you say drive-through, you're going to have a drive-through window.
So it would be more like a pneumatic tube, like you would see in a bank.
And that tube, so you'd be driving in, the way I understand it, Prospect Street, turning into the far end of your lot.
Yep.
Closest to central.
Yes.
And then looping around and a hard left turn.
Yep. And then you're
Parking lot. So the pneumatic tube would be somewhere in between.
Yes, exactly.
And the cars would loop back around and come out Prospect Street or
They could take a right.
Go and go out Hope.
Go out Hope. Yep.
And the thing about that is that it's going to give the the business as well as the customers added buffer for Corona nineteen. And it'll be a lot, lot cleaner, if you will. Now, the other thing is the waiting public will be off the streets. So it'll be something that you know, other towns have suffered. And hopefully
Until you get an influx of of customers.
So the way that I'm envisioning the drive-through working is that it's not going to be like a McDonald's where you pull up, you place your order and then you wait for it. Like, these are going to be quick transactions that they've already placed an order on our website and they know their order is ready. So they'll have a text code that says their order is ready. We'll go through the whole verification of their IDs. It'll be verified on our website and then we'll do a re-verification as they're at the the drive-through. So it will be a faster process than just say like we're waiting to fulfill orders as people are at the window. So there won't be the noise of like an ordering system. I've put a couple of calls out to different manufacturers and in throughout the country. So we're going to source the quietest one to make sure that we're good neighbors.
Are there other interviews that have already doing this that you know of?
I know of a couple that have proposed the ideas. I haven't heard back from the Cannabis Control Commission if they're against it or for it. I do believe they defer to you guys a lot because it's in your town. So I did a little research to see if if it was a prohibited use and things like that. Like, I wasn't quite sure how you guys would feel about a drive-through. But if I think that it's going to be a nice, efficient way.
Well, I was just trying to, my my point of that question is I'm trying to find out what what kind of volume they've had. I'm I'm sure when it first starts off, it's it's going to be the new new thing on the block.
Right.
But what what are you anticipating for volume of traffic, drive-through or foot traffic?
I don't have a crystal ball.
Are there other other establishments doing this already and what have they seen?
So I know that in neighboring Uxbridge, there is the potential, and I believe that it is in the process of being approved. To have, so we'll be able to kind of look over and see what they're doing well before we're ready to open.
If you're looking to
One under construction. I'm not sure where it stands.
If if you're looking to have the drive-through and it's it's going to be built with the intention of ordering online and then somebody coming to pick up at a scheduled time when their order is ready kind of thing. Do you have a, do you have an idea of what kind of limitations you're going to have on that? Like, we'll be having no more than ten people come within an hour? Like, are there any kind of parameters like that that you could discuss?
I mean, we can absolutely take into consideration anything that you guys need from us or want to have as far as parameters. We obviously don't want to have too many people at our business at once for health concerns. So we will absolutely be scheduling people in increments so that it doesn't, you know, we're kind of in this place where we can sit back and watch how everybody handled COVID nineteen so far. And a lot of these establishments didn't or haven't been allowing people to walk in at all. So it's nice that we can kind of sit back and figure out what works and what doesn't work and how to keep a good flow rather than a backup.
Do you have a sense for the number of vehicles that can be in your drive-through area and not be on the street?
I think I just was able to share by screen. Can you see my screen this this time?
We currently see the planning board town hall webpage.
Getting closer, though.
Something's being shared. I think it's just the wrong window.
You guys have copies? Do each of you have copies of the application with the updated site plan? Because I believe the drive-through was in what Rocco submitted.
I should have sent that to the board, but I don't, I may have neglected to send the map out if you sent this.
No worries.
I will go.
No, I'm just gonna, I'll put it right out there. My first concern, and that's why I ask. Number one is the traffic exiting off of if they go out Hope Street, now you're entertaining the influx of traffic and with the bike path. Not only vehicles entering and exiting, you've got foot traffic. You've got bicycles.
Right.
Then you've got the other ones that might come out going through the drive-through or even just going to your establishment. And they decide to take a right out of the parking lot on the Prospect Street and take a quick left because there might be some cars. Now you're you're putting the traffic on Bow Street towards the post office. And that whole area entering or more so exiting all three of those streets, Bow, Prospect and Hope can be, you know, a little hairy sometimes, especially Bow Street with having basically a four-way intersection, even though it's, you know, just Ironstone and Bow that have the stops.
Brian.
You've got the cars coming out, cars coming up the hill. They can be blinded out of sight. So that that's, you know, one of my concerns on on the traffic flow.
Now, Brian, if we didn't have the drive-through and the vehicles weren't on the property, we'd have a lot worse problem with the roads being blocked by people who are wanting to come in. Now, not all people we use in the drive-through. There's plenty of parking. We added a lot of parking. And there, if I can get this screen to work.
I just shared the site plan with the planning board, so you should have you should, it was, for some reason, it wasn't included in my initial email. So you should have, it should be in response to the email I sent you earlier this afternoon.
I never got one this afternoon.
I did get the one from this afternoon, but I didn't see this map in it. Though, if I can open it up, if it does come over, I can share my screen too.
No, it's not that I'm against it. I'm just trying to see if there's a way we can flow flow traffic. And that's why my big thing, I was asking volume, how to, you know, if we keep it all going, you know, one direction coming out and coming in or coming in one way and going out the other.
Well, that's how we plan on doing it, Brian, is they're going to come in one way and go out the other. And the, as far as the volume is concerned, the thing to think about is the more volume there is, the more money that Millville makes, right?
Yeah.
So here's the, here's the plan.
Other people in other positions have to deal with it.
I don't want to cause issues.
All good. I'm just
So you'll see the way that the cars come through and then there's an existing fence on the back wall. So we won't be disruptive to our neighbors. We're going to patch some of that piece up. That was one of the neighbors' concerns. They wanted a pretty fence. So we're going to extend that out when we're building. And then you'll see the way the cars loop around. There was like no way to keep the traffic off if we had done a window. Because the only way you would be able to actually approach it would just be to stay on the street. So we kind of pictured it as an underground system because I don't, I don't know yet exactly if it's going to be like an overhang, like a bank or if it could be like a tube underground.
Okay, so this is, this is a lot better. I mean, we probably should have waited. You did say they could go out Hope Street or Prospect Street from the drive-through, and this shows that they can't.
They cannot. So we had discussed ways to maybe keep the two parking lots one, but there was like
What I was looking for. It keeps the volume of traffic in one, one direction that the
We put a lot of thought into this. Originally, we had it cutting across from Hope Street, but then the existing well was there and we couldn't make that work. So we've been talking about this for quite a while, trying to make it perfect for you guys.
And the parking area is going to be compacted gravel, I see.
Yes.
The the actual material is asphalt, right, regrinds. It's hardened and it makes for a good sub base.
Hi, this is Sean Scunjo. I'm Rocco's partner, also co-owner. I just wanted to make a couple of points while I was here. Some of the things that we did consider is we did try to keep most of the waiting traffic off of the property, off of the public ways. And some of the reasonings for the tube is is added security, as there won't be as many loitering cars in the parking lot or suspected activity because it would just be hopefully a quick transfer where there wouldn't be very much money transferred because the app would take care of all that. And it would be a very quick. And if we, if we needed to, we could also provide signs on Prospect to exit only to the left. I mean, no, exit only, yes, exit only to the left. I mean, no, exit only, yes, exit only to the left, if that would be helpful.
Hours of operation?
Um, that is something that we can decide together. We we originally, I think, put on our application that we'd be open nine to eight, because I believe those were the hours that you guys allowed.
Brian, on our, on our narrative, we submitted eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Sunday. But we're flexible.
For seven days a week.
Yes. You see that as a problem, Brian?
Depends how the neighbors, I mean, I'm only asking my questions to come out. Anyone else on the board here have questions or?
Mine was traffic. And if people are turning on to Prospect. I don't know, how much, how much room is there between Central Street and the entrance to the property on Prospect?
It's probably what, three or four hundred feet?
Yeah.
There's a, there's, it's probably three, four hundred feet and it's three, total of three residential houses. It's the, it's the least amount of residential houses on the way into the property.
You don't, you don't expect traffic to back up to Central Street?
We have no, knowing at this time. But the traffic that could be out on Prospect Street combined with the traffic that'll be within the parking lot. Should be pretty substantial and should be able to hold the number of vehicles that we're looking at servicing.
And again, as far as the drive-through, there shouldn't be excess vehicles because there should be a timed monitoring on their time to pick up. So it's not like they're gonna have people just waiting and ordering, like she said, as a McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts. This is gonna be a pickup and go, so it's not gonna be as, as if they were waiting to make a decision. It should be a very fast process for pickup. It shouldn't be a, a drawn-out period. It should be very timely.
And we've actually tripled our, actually quadrupled our parking spots so that when people do drive up, they have plenty of parking.
How big is the retail space gonna be inside?
Um, so it will be just about twelve hundred square feet. So we'll, we'll house cultivation, retail and manufacturing in six thousand square feet.
I also know that they did say that we had a, they did, there was a mailing to all the butters as well as a public hearing at the site. That wasn't just like us trying to have a public hearing. There was, it was a, it was a butters, it was mailed and everyone that was, had any qualms was able to show up live and have any, and we really had very, very. So the one question we did have was how soon will you open?
Um, I did, we didn't go over quite our timeline, but in our head, if everything goes the way that it should. Obviously, I can't control the CCC, but based on projections, we would be open this time next year with our own products to sell. Cause our holdup will be that we want our cultivation to be ready to go to market so we can go with our own products. So we'll have the crop growing and then we'll be able to open and sell all of those products, November, December, twenty twenty-one.
Now, also in that business plan, the total of product produced in the building isn't just gonna go to their sales. Some of it will go to anyone else that would like to distribute their product. So their, their total sales isn't just reliant on the actual drive door in through the property. They, they have a, they have a pretty, they have a multilateral business plan that's has different parts of attack, so it's not just reliant on the actual door sale foot traffic.
Right, there's wholesale available. We'll rely on other cultivators as well, so we'll procure some products. But it's nice, we can link up with a delivery service that will be able to take all of our products to other parts of the state. So we're really excited.
So as far as the board is concerned, are there any other questions we can answer so that we could get a favorable vote tonight?
So just to review what your request is in relationship to the, the special permit for everybody and for those who are listening. You're asking the zoning to be changed to include all of our, any marijuana related.
It's not, we're not changing the zoning, we're changing the uses.
But I'm sorry, that's what I meant, adding those uses to the special permit. You're requesting the installation of solar panels on the roof of the building to offset the cost of electricity. You are requesting to construct and install the drive-through window. Discussed and you're requesting to also construct and install an unlit sign on the Hope Street side of the property.
Yes.
I'm gonna echo what everybody else said. I think, I think our, my biggest concern is just the traffic and, and doing what we can to ensure that we don't have cars waiting out on the street and I, I
Absolutely.
Gonna assume that that's what the rest of the board is looking for as well. So if
Like what Sean had mentioned, we have gone over this several times and made several reiterations of plans. We're certainly open to any feedback, but the engineer and the architect hammered it out. And this is the best option they could think of. If there's something that the board could offer, we'd love to hear it.
I mean, from my standpoint, I'm just thinking about managing the folks that are waiting in that line. Like by having timed pickups, by being clear with your customers that if they are waiting in the street, they should wait in the parking lot for a while until they can get into that line of some sort. But there needs to be some
Well, I imagine that will happen. I imagine what will happen is once the line in the parking lot on our property is the capacity. We'll have someone there to have them go into the parking lot and then have them take a number. And they'll be, you know, called, so that there, it'll be a streamlined event. It's not gonna go down Washington Street. It's gonna be something that we can manage where we have control of it.
Okay, can I follow up on that question? So, or then can I follow up on that answer? So you said that if the drive-through kind of U is full, you'll have somebody direct them to the parking lot to wait and take a number?
Yeah, so
The smaller parking lot out here in the front, so we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna, you know, convolute the road. So we have this parking area right where, inside of where the cars are. So we imagine them parking there and waiting until it's their turn. And then what we would do is call them on the phone, because we have their phone numbers. And tell them their order is ready and to hop into the line. And if it gets even larger than that, we have the other alternate parking on the other side of the building.
Okay.
I believe, I believe the precedent in a lot of the surrounding towns is that and I believe that Cassie had spoken with the chief and agreed to, is that for the opening days, you have a detail officer to monitor that kind of traffic flow. And if there had, if there is an excess of traffic, you set up, we would set up an alternate site to be able to hold the overflow and that, that, that's what Caroline's Cannabis and some of the alternate facilities have done.
I do believe it's written into our host agreement that that is one hundred percent on me. To make sure that we have the traffic control and that kind of stuff. So if we need off-duty officers and things like that to direct traffic, we will absolutely do that, because we do wanna be really good neighbors. We wanna be here for the long haul. You know, this is a large investment to us, like we want everybody in the neighborhood to be happy. And it is cool being in town, because they are happy when they see me now, so.
A lot of people don't know that Cassie does run another facility in Rhode Island and I know this because I'm closer to them, but they pay to have the whole street plowed as well as some of their neighbors' houses. Their, their actual facilities taken care of, just so that it's not an order of, a source of any contention. I know they do that for a couple dwellings in that, in that location.
Thanks for tooting my horn.
No problem.
Just fuck, correct?
Oh, sorry, you guys were both talking at the same time.
I said the police chief has been involved.
So I'm actually gonna see him on Wednesday. So he and I have talked a lot over the last six years, because that's how long it's been that I've been bothering you guys about this project. But we do, obviously, because of COVID and things like that, we haven't gotten together. But our security plan's done. I'm gonna meet with him and Peter on Wednesday to go over all of our security plan. And, you know, obviously, he'll probably have some comments on traffic that we can absolutely take into consideration.
Okay, and with that, I think
Traffic has not been talked about with him yet.
No. He is coming out to the site on Wednesday.
Yeah, my question was to Gabe and to the rest of the board, is it traditional that a situation where we can expect a site to have a lot of traffic that the police department or DPW would evaluate?
Um, if the board was comfortable, we can pass the application to the police department and the DPW, I think that would make sense. I, I don't know what the precedent has been in Millville regarding that, though.
Well, DPW is involved, but maybe definitely the police department.
Well, they've been involved since the host agreement has been written and they've understood that there's going to be traffic. That's why it's written in the host agreement that Cassie has to hire off-duty officers to to guide the traffic. So to the, to a certain extent, we've gone through that and Cassie has spent a lot of time on that.
I, I, I don't deny it, I just think we owe it to the police chief as our public safety director, officer in the town. To see this plan and to see where it's going. It's a, you know, tough decision. Uh, and it basically all falls on his back when it comes down to it.
So your concern is with the traffic, not with the drive-through, correct?
Yeah, it's just traffic in general. I think the drive, I think the design, I think it's all great, but it's in, in my, making a tough decision right here. It's, you know, us as the sitting planning board, or I'm speaking for myself. Uh, we can say, yeah, this looks great, which I think it does. And everyone knows I'm also the highways lawyer in town and uh, so I have some concerns about, you know, traffic and road usage, but I think it all can work on my end. But I can't speak for him, uh, who does and is responsible for the flow of traffic. I, you know, you just heard our zoning building official, I don't know if you were listening prior to you coming on. Uh, he's telling us that our stuff isn't being handed out to all the various boards ahead of time and we've been taking votes and, and I, I know that's been happening because firsthand, I had to ask a couple of times in the reas where, where my plans were for my department. And it needs to be, you know, done systematically for all town boards. And to me, this is, like, again, I'll say it one more time, it's a tough decision, but it's, this is definitely a big one. And I, I think it's great. I think it's gonna work. But for me, I really think I need to hear from him that he's been involved and he's looking at the same thing we're looking at. First time I see this plan tonight being shared and, and it's, you know, well put together, but you, you potentially put seventy vehicles, you get sixty-five parking spots right there and then let alone the drive-through. It's a lot for the little town of Millville without our public safety officers' words coming in here. This is, you know, my, my, my self-speak.
No, I agree, Brian. I think this, I think the plan looks great. I think everything makes sense. But I also do have a little bit of concern, just making sure that everybody does have the adequate time to look at it and comment on it appropriately, and then we can make the best educated decision across the board.
Excuse me, this, this plan has been in the hands of the board for two months now and we've been waiting for tonight for a while. And we're kind of anxious to get it done, but I understand what you're looking for, to get the police chief involved. Doing that, we'll, we'll actually be meeting with him like Cassie said on Wednesday. So we can hash it out then and if there are other options that we come across, we can we can explore those as well. We're open.
Well, one of the other things that, that we're deciding on tonight, and I just wanna be clear with, with what we're doing anyway. It's, we're deciding to accept the waiver on this so that we're not having to go through the full site plan approval. And then, then secondarily, we would decide whether or not to accept it. So I think, I think that's something that we could discuss too as a board, but are, are we okay with these pieces as being minor modifications? Even if we're not voting to accept it just yet because we're waiting on some feedback from, you know, another department. But then at least we could kind of have it out there that where it sounds to me like the majority of us are in favor of the plans, just having an understanding of how it impacts other departments is important to us. I mean, for the board members that are on here, are we comfortable as a board with, with not with, with going through these plans as modifications and accepting that waiver?
I mean, this is, this is interesting because the, while the modification may be minor. I feel like it has a larger impact to the surrounding area.
I agree with Justin that it does have a larger impact, but they have already gone in front of the Board of Selectmen, they already have drawn up a host agreement. Uh, they've already met with the neighbors, they've done their due diligence with all of that. They've done their due diligence with putting this plan together, but
And we all, we have also had a public hearing on it. It was, we're not trying to avoid the public hearing, we're just, yeah.
I personally don't think you need another one and I, I feel that, in my opinion, the minor i- is justifiable in through with the blessing of the boards below hearing that they have all had a chance to see this and agree upon the change. And I, I really firmly believe that there will be no issue and it will be worked out and your entities, both of them will accommodate anything that we want and I'm sure it'll be fine, but again, until the minor modification, I'm all for it. For setting it forth without hearing, again, from the other departments, I, I can't go there yet.
I'm fine with the minor modification as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the minor modification. Having, having gone through this process with you guys just a short time ago, originally, you know, remember trying to write these applications to cover just about any use that we could think of. Of course, this one just wasn't on the list at the time, but so I don't have a problem with it being a minor piece of it. But, but I do have some concern that, especially after our earlier conversation anyway, that that this is something that possibly other people would wanna just weigh in on and where we that this is something that possibly other people would want to just weigh in on and where we haven't gotten any information from any departments on this. Yet. I think we, I think it would be smart of us just to double check before we move forward.
I think that would entail, you know, inviting when we come back to, well, I can't speak for what's going to happen, but inviting everyone back to discuss this together.
So Pam, is this something where we can, we can make a motion to approve the waiver with a some kind of conditional amendment that includes you know, review by the other deport, by the other boards?
Well, that's just the, it's two different things. The waiver is for it becoming a minor modification. Then as far as the other boards are concerned, like the police department, that's for the act, this is what I believe. This, that's from the, for the actual modification itself. So I think Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking for the board to make a decision on the minor modification and then get the other departments involved for a decision at a later date?
Yeah, I mean, so you guys can let me know what you think, but that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking that we can you know, all agree to or not agree to accept these as minor accept the waiver to to keep these as minor modifications. And then secondarily, we will still need to vote to approve these two things. But I think we could do so by reaching out specifically to these departments. We have some concerns about and asking them to either submit a letter or to join us on our next meeting to discuss. Because, you know, for example, if the chief had no problem with it and wanted to shoot us a letter or something, I don't know that we need to waste his time having him come to a meeting unless he had other pieces to discuss, but I would like to have him weigh in.
Oh, we're going to be meeting with him Wednesday, so we'll ask him to, to also approach you.
I think that would be helpful. So if that makes sense to all of you, then the planning board members agreeing to accept this as a minor modification to the site plan and special permit applications.
This is allowing the minor part of it to add the wording for the cannabis and marijuana?
Yes. We're not, we're not agreeing to accept it just yet, but we're agreeing to accept the waiver that they've asked for.
I feel it's a minor one myself.
Just can agree to a minor waiver.
Agreed. All right. So that's all four of us. So we're agreeing to to see this further as a minor adjustment to the existing plans that are there. We will invite you and we will reach out to Chief Landry to see how he wants to weigh in or if he has anything he wants to contribute to this discussion and we'll, we'll keep you on the agenda as the first item at our next meeting, which is on the 28th.
The 28th of December, correct?
Yep.
Should we be, should we be, we asking for a letter from all departments for or from the chief at least for his recommendations, like an official on Wednesday so that we can have that put in in the next meeting. So it's on paper for yous.
I would happily accept paper if he wanted to submit it or if he wanted, if he did have other concerns and wanted to join us, we will extend the invitation to him as well. Unless somebody else on the board feels differently, I think that would work.
I think that would work. I think we also need to. I'd like to get a full set of the plans or copy of it now that I see this and I also, you know, we're going through this, we give it to the other boards. And I see no problems with it. We come back on the 28th and they, you know, if Gabe can head that up and make sure it's put in their mailboxes, then we go from there.
All right. Thank you for having us. Does that work for you folks? That's all right?
Yes.
Do you have to have a motion or a vote on that?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have a vote on on this piece of it. We will need to have a vote on it to, to approve it.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time. Next meeting.
Same to you. Bye now.
Thank you.
All right. What's up next?
You can make sure we get those, get that put into the all departments' mailboxes so they can review this and make sure they know it's just a minor, minor modification on our, on our end.
Yeah, I'll pass. I'll be in on Thursday morning so I can print out copies.
Good luck.
Put them in the mailboxes. Just to clarify, are there any specific, every single department or any specific ones you'd like me to reach out to?
I mean, specifically, I'd, I'd love for you to reach out to the chief and just let him know that we're looking to see what he thinks about this. It sounded like he has this already, but you know, we're looking for his advice and invite him to the next meeting. I'm wondering if some of the mailbox issues is partly the fact that folks aren't from other boards, aren't necessarily getting in. So it might be worth it just to ask the town clerk for the email list for departments. So we can make sure that those folks who are not picking up mail are getting their, their emails.
Okay, I'll do that as well.
I think you have the key departments, Public Safety, Highway.
Make sure Brian gets a copy.
Well, he should, he should have gotten my email. I don't know if I sent it to the wrong address or something.
Yeah, now I'm in the computers.
Up next, we have 226 Main Street.
Right, 226 Main Street. What do we have? What's going on?
I don't, I believe John, are you with 226 Main Street?
Yes, I am.
All right.
And Jude, Jude is my engineer. He'll be speaking on it.
Jude, are you there?
I don't know if Jude's having technical difficulties.
Yeah, I like to talk when the, the mic is off for some reason. So, so now that I said everything, do you guys have any questions? Sorry about that. Um. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's, it's getting cut off. Really, all you see is the map.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to start there so you guys could see the location of the site itself. At the intersection here along the Blackstone River. It's a vacant site right now. It formally had a couple of buildings on it. I'm not sure what the use was in the past. It is its own commercial business district. And what Mr. Scangio is doing, again, because I was muted, I'm Jude Govan from Andrews Engineering for the record. What Mr. Scangio is proposing to do is put in 9,800 square feet of storage buildings, you know, self-storage buildings. And spread them out over these six buildings. We're planning on using the the existing curb cut off along the, along Main Street and utilizing that. We're going to have us come in with a few spots and handicap parking before the gate, which is in this area here. And there's going to be an office and a private section of storage, and then the rest is going to be completely gated and fenced off. All of the drainage, the roof and all the pavement will all come down to underground recharge chambers down in the front corner of the site. We're proposing to drill a well up in the rear corner of the site. And we've done testing for the septic system up on the Chestnut Hill roadside of the site. What you see in the dark green is going to be the woods. The light green is kind of going to be a grassy area along the sides and along the front. And then the light gray is pavement. And the buildings are the, that brown color. We're kind of here preliminarily. We understand that. We haven't officially applied for a site plan approval. But Mr. Scangio is adamant that we come in and discuss this with you. Because he wants, he wants to be proactive and get the comments, some preliminary comments from the board, kind of just show them what we're thinking, what the layout is, how we're going to handle the stormwater in the sewage. Just so you guys have laid eyes on it, we're not anticipating having an in-depth discussion about it because again, it's not an official site plan approval. But we just kind of wanted to stop by and show you the plan and this is what we're thinking. And here, if you have any, you know, off the hip comments and we'll take them into consideration and go from there before we finalize and ask for site plan approval.
You have any idea on a traffic pattern?
The way we've designed the, the gates is you come in off the existing access and we come in and there's three spots for regular cars and then a handicap spot here. And then anybody that's coming in to use the storage facility is going to go through a mechanical gate that will open based on, I think, a passcode or a pass key. And then they will come in.
Okay, I missed the, I missed that light blue line. So.
Oh, yeah. So the, the whole place will be completely fenced off. Be a sliding gate here where my hand, the hand is. So the traffic pattern would just be coming in. And if they're looking to rent a unit, they're going to be parking in these spots. If they're coming in to access their units, they're going to drive to their unit and come through. All of the aisle widths are 26 feet in width. So plenty, you know, typically it's 24 feet in width for for access around like a commercial or a retail site, but we give 26 feet because there's going to be some turning movements. And we're going to have bollards on the end of the building so people don't dent the corners.
A single story, two story?
Single story. And we're trying to orientate them, most of them, so that we could have some solar on. So all these roofs are slated to face towards the pavement. They won't be, they won't be like typical A-frame roofs to shed off the back. Everything will come down to the front and get collected in the gutters. And then there's going to be underground piping that takes that roof water and pipes it down into the underground storage chambers. We've already conducted testing in a few areas on site and giving the, the wells and the need for the septic and the stormwater. That's kind of how these things all laid out where they, where they're shown.
How big is the site?
A little over an acre.
Pretty cut and dry.
I kind of felt the same way, but again, Mr. Scangio, he likes to do the right thing and then do the right thing. So he wanted to come in before we submitted it just to see if we were spinning our wheels.
I was just looking for some, make sure some insight from the board that they were happy with the layout and the way it was. We were trying to avoid traffic on Chestnut Street side. We kept it all on Main Street side so that we wouldn't have any traffic problems. And I think we gave enough of a buffer around the edge of vegetation so that it wouldn't really affect any of the neighbors. Neighbors on the right are kind of quiet though. It's a cemetery. So I was just looking for any input or any suggestions from the board. And as Brian stated, I think it is kind of cut and dry, but I wanted to make sure.
I think it looks good.
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, well, I guess thank you for your time and your comments and.
Engineering end of it, you said 26 feet. You feel that would be enough for, which I'm sure they review, but like fire truck or emergency vehicles to build the turnaround?
Yes. I could show a turning pattern and then there, when we get to.
Any other questions?
Oh.
No, I'm all set.
Thank you for, for coming and showing this to us. I think it'll be exciting to see where it goes.
Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you.
All right. What's next? Gabe, do we have anyone else on to talk with us tonight?
There's no one else who we invited tonight. So just, it seems like the rest of the discussion is limited to board business. The, if you guys want to continue the shared planner discussion, I think there's been some updates with that. Solar bylaw I would strike because we've already, I think we've talked, talked that through pretty thoroughly with Lincoln. And I, you know, we have some ideas for moving forward on that. Any updates on Memorial Park? And then I just have a couple of my own, like really small updates.
Sure. All right. So, so quick little things. Last time we spoke, we had John Hadley on with us who explained what they were needing in terms of signatures on the plans for Memorial Park. I did meet up with him a couple of weeks ago and took care of that as, as we had discussed. So it's my understanding that they're, they're all set right now.
All right.
As for the shared planner discussion, let me pull up a couple of my notes. When we last spoke, we talked about whether or not we wanted to continue investigating the shared planner. Once we realized that mathematically, it would mean that Millville could only really participate in the shared planner if we were willing to limit ourselves to six hours of professional shared planner time a week. When we discussed last, we thought that that did sound reasonable, that we really needed the professional help and that we could try to get creative with some of the administrative help that might offset the needs for the professional help. Anyway, so we did reach out to the folks that were collaborate, helping us to collaborate with Mendon and Uxbridge in, in these discussions about the shared planner. They sent over a new chart that kind of showed the minimum and the maximum of where we could, where we would be and a draft of an intermunicipal agreement, which I sent to you all a couple of weeks back. And then I also sent a copy of it to the plant, I'm sorry, to the Board of Selectmen and to the Town Administrator. And I asked if the Board of Selectmen would discuss this at an upcoming meeting so that we could kind of get a handle on whether or not they would be open to an intermunicipal agreement because there had been some rumblings about that maybe not being something that has worked out well in the past. The Board of Selectmen did discuss it at their last meeting and they all agreed that they would be open to, to further looking at this. They had some questions about some of the details that we would have to include in the intermunicipal agreement, which none of which we had discussed yet, having not been that far down the road anyway, to, to kind of talk about things like oversight and exact costs and things like that. I did reach out to the folks from CMR PC that were heading up these discussions and let them know where we're at. They were really excited. They gave us a couple of questions that we could discuss tonight. But kind of that's, that's what's going on in a nutshell. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that before I start getting into a little bit of the nitty gritty. Um, before I start getting into a little bit of the nitty gritty. Okay. All right. So one of the things that we were talking about, um, in this agreement that the agreement does not state for is, um, any process of review of this person. So if we were to move forward, um, with seeking a shared planner with Menden and Oxbridge, um, so the way it's currently looking like it's going to go is that this person would be hired by the town of Oxbridge in some kind of collaborative process with the three towns. And, uh, Oxbridge would then be paying the salary, be paying the benefits, and then the other two towns would be assessed for the, for the salary and benefits portion of it. And that's how it would move forward. So the division of the hours right now is looking like Oxbridge would have this person for about 18 hours. Menden would have this person for about 16 hours a week and then Millville would have that person for the additional six. And, um, it would be on us to make sure that that person is giving us that six hours of work and that we have some kind of a review process in place to ensure that we're getting what we need. Um, that we're not kind of getting lost in the weeds, um, and and find some ways of holding that person accountable when, um, there there's a very real possibility that those six hours are not going to necessarily be spent in our town hall. Um, which is something else that we would have to discuss also is if we're going to insist on this person being in our town hall and it's only six hours a week, then there's always the potential of that person being customer-facing that entire time and therefore not getting some of that planning stuff done that we're needing to have done. So I'm kind of throwing this all out there to you to to get a handle on if you have any thoughts on it. Um, if, uh, if one of you would like to be involved with these discussions with the, the, the two town administrators, um, and the folks from CMR PC who are trying to drive this process. Uh, I think everybody's really excited that we're still kind of in this, but now we've got to kind of work through and hammer out the details in a way that are going to make sense for us so that we can actually get a job posting out there and start considering candidates. Um, I'll preface all of this with while in between the last couple of meetings, we did get an extension with CMR PC, um, for Gabe's services. That's going to take us through January 15th. And then we need to come up with another plan. So.
It's really not that far away.
Really not that far away. Um.
I have a question. Um, so if the, so if it comes down to the shared planner offering or, you know, getting six hours um, of attention to to Millville, um, how much of that other clerical customer-facing, that kind of, um, that kind of work and responsibility, uh, do we have? Uh, who who's that going to fall to? Um, and is there, is there the potential for, you know, administrative, uh, help to to help do that?
Very good questions. Um, we've had some brief discussions about help on the administrative side. It seems like that might be a possibility to discuss with with some of the positions that are currently in our town hall, but it would be on us to try to figure out, like, we, we need to figure out what we're asking for. Is it? Is it somebody who's going to, uh, make copies of of the plans when they come in and stick them in all the department heads, uh, mailboxes? Is it somebody who's going to sit in on our meetings and take minutes or take minutes after the fact and and make sure that we have them? Right now, you know, all of that administrative stuff is is being split up by Gabe and myself. Um, I'm personally not looking to continue in that direction. Uh, I'd like to look for a solution that that is a little more reliable, um, in the long run anyway. But I don't have all the details on that yet. So I think what could be really helpful is for us to start putting a list together of of our planning needs and then our clerical needs and and kind of see what that looks like.
I agree. And and you heard, uh, Lincoln say tonight that, um, back in the eighties, they had a, they called it a, a secretary. Um, and I know even up here in just a few years back, uh, just prior to me being on, so it was within the ten, that last 10 years. But prior to me being on the planning board, they, they even had, uh, in a secretary and it was one of the positions within the town hall, the, um, assessor, uh, used to do the planning board, secretarial work, uh, was at the meetings, did the note, minutes and notes. Um, I think that's going to be a key key item to go hand in hand if we go with the shared planner, um, if we're only getting six hours because we're looking at this meeting here tonight and when we're using our planner, we've already used them for two, uh, as of right now.
Yep.
Four left. It's.
Well, and that's how we've been functioning right now, too. I mean, we have CMR PC for about six hours a week and and, um, I'm sure, Gabe, you can probably attest to how much of that is pushing paper um, versus chasing down, you know, answers and and helping us actually do planning. It's, it's, it's not much. That's why we sit here on this. It, it's not your fault either, but you know, we sit here saying, oh, yeah, we got halfway through the signed by law like six, eight months ago and we weren't able to kind of get back around to it because we had some questions and some research that needed to happen. And then in the meantime, we have all of, uh, it, which is all a great thing. We've got plans that we're discussing all the time, which I know when I was starting on the board, we, we weren't having these types of requests as regularly. So I think that's all positive things, but just means that we, it's two different needs that we have. We have some administrative needs, but we have bigger planning needs that that I think we need to start tackling in order to prepare for the future. Otherwise, we're always going to be a step behind.
Well, part of that, I believe, is going to be going, you know, the planning board, us as members stepping up to the plate. I mean, we have a a $14,000 budget that we work with, um, to to get the job done. And and you know how we are all, you know, all paid very well and being overworked. So I think we're going to have to, you know, get in front of our, uh, leaders of the town finance and, uh, the Board of Selectmen to, um, they want to keep moving forward and we have these commercial projects, um, marijuana, cannabis, uh, the, the solar arrays, um, coming in, you know, they, they got to support, support us. And that's, you know, the backbone of it.
Yeah. Anybody was not open to it. I, I know, um, it did get brought up at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting that at some point we're going to have to kind of right-size what the planning department's budget is so that we can have the services that the town needs and wants right now in order to grow. But I, I think at sometime between now and when the budget planning starts, we got to get a handle on what that ask is and and what are we looking for? Is it increased hours for a planner? Is it some help on the administrative side? I think as we're sitting here tonight, I, I got a message from town hall about you calling to discuss some options about some, some of what we're looking to do anyway. Um, I, I would love to bring up some of this as, as a, a real need that we have, but I, I think defining that need is is important. Uh, uh, that's, I think, where we need to get to is defining what our need is so that we can look for what we need. Um, I'm happy to start a document of kind of what I think that that looks like, but I would really prefer to have you all kind of weigh in on that.
By all means.
Um, and then additionally, I, I, the more I look into this shared planner option and and some of the struggles that we've had over the last several years in keeping a planner, the more I really think that, that a shared planner is the right decision for us right now anyway, that, that it's going to help us to get to a spot where we can't get to on our own. Um, so I'd really like to, to put the bones in place to participate in that discussion, but having an understanding of what we're willing to do and what we're wanting to do, um, and in terms of oversight and and what we want out of this six-hour planner is really important. Um, and I think that that's another piece that we need to define as, as the board. So what I'm looking for, um, on this piece of it, so, so one piece is, I'll, I'll start a document about the, the admin help that I think that we might want to start considering. Um, and I'll circulate that around. You can add your thoughts to it. We can discuss it at the next meeting. For, for this next piece of it, I'd, I'd love to see another member of the board, um, step up and participate in the, the shared planner discussions, um, kind of get a handle on what they're thinking and and weigh in on how we would participate in that process. What does oversight look like? What, um, what are we going to be expecting of that person? Um, how we want to participate in the hiring process, um, and review process is going to be really important. All right. Well, I'll continue these discussions for now and, um, moving forward, I'll just bring to you the, the questions that get brought up at these, these meetings and, um.
Uh, Pam, it is, was, um, I tried to weigh in on one of these meetings, but it was going to be too many of us.
Yeah, we only have two.
I mean, I'm hap- I'm happy to keep doing it. Um, I only knew about that one, that, the one Brian's talking about.
Yeah, that's all we had so far. I mean, there's been, um, there's been some emails he's sent out to us in the meantime, um, that have been going back and forth and there's been some back and forth with the folks from CMR PC and, um, and Peter, our town administrator, who is asking some questions, again, a lot of it relating to things like oversight and control and, um, making sure that we get what we pay for really is what is, I think, most important.
I think the, and and I could be wrong, but I did hear a piece of the, uh, Selectmen's meeting. They wanted to know, uh, that the planning board members were in support of this, you know, all of us members, um, together. And I, you know, I don't know if we need to vote on it to go forward or, you know.
We did, we voted on this a couple of meetings back, but you know.
Every meeting, I just.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, maybe it would be helpful for them, for us to have a, a more formal vote on, on moving forward with the shared planner or not moving forward with the shared planner. Um, I think, yeah, you're probably right. It would be really helpful, at least to, to go back to them with that information. Um, I know Bill's not able to join us tonight, but we could take a vote for the four of us. I'll, I'll for once say I'm, I'm strongly in favor of it. I think, I think we need some professional services that we don't have. And I think, um, we've been burned a few times trying to go down the road of finding somebody for Millville alone a- and it hasn't worked. So I'm, I'm looking to explore a new option.
We need long-term, uh, you know, help, not more than, you know, three or six months and someone moves along. So I'm, I'm in full support of getting somebody in, having something that lasts and we can hopefully all grow, grow with.
Hello, Pam?
Hello. Oh, hey, Bill.
I, I came on late. I'm sorry.
No worries. I'm glad you're on.
Listening quietly in the background.
Yeah, yeah. But what do you think, Bill?
Um, about tonight in general?
The town planner.
I, uh, I, uh, about the planner?
Yeah, about the planner.
When are these meetings going to be? I really want to try and help more, but just trying to, it's, no matter what day we do and my schedule just changed again. So, uh, uh, no matter what, maybe I could do something during the day if there's going to be some meetings or something to try and relieve some stress with regard to, uh,
Yeah.
doing something with those meetings. That, that's obviously going to be tough during the day. That would be tough during the day, right?
Those shared planner discussions with the, the other towns have been, the, the last, there's been two, I think, that we've had and they were both in the middle of the day at some point. Um, they're not the easiest things to make, but that, that's when the other folks in the, the other towns are able to work. One, one conundrum that did come up that I should bring up that, that Bill is reminding me of as he's talking about his schedule is if we were to move forward with this, our meetings are at the same time as Menden's meetings currently. And that one of the pieces is that one of us would have to change the night that we hold our planning board meetings. I don't know that it's, it has to be us, but it might be easier if it were us, um, to move our meeting.
I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to affect me whatever night we move to now. It's going to be the same.
You can't make it no matter what, right?
It, it'll, it'll be difficult no matter what. So I'll just, you know, get here if I get here a little late or.
You know, so going to the planner, um, is it? What, what is the flip side of that? If we set these hours, um, because we all know or kind of have agreed here that we yeah, we need more. And some of it could be given up by, like, the admin support, but planning-wise, I believe we're going to need more. So in that discussion, I think it needs to be talked about. I mean, if you're dividing the hours up equally now, what happens next year when we want to change and we need, you know, we want 10 hours?
So I mean, that's some of the stuff we have to figure out. Um, you know, are we looking right now at, uh, an agreement that goes for a year and then we have the ability to kind of sit back down and and rediscuss if it's working? Um, that's one of the things that I put out to them, that I, I didn't know where we were going to be at in a, in a year's time, having a real planner for a year. Um, it might make our, our needs feel like it, it does change. Um, so that's something I was looking to include in there is some kind of out, uh, at 12 months, wh- whether it's out because we want to, this isn't working, we need to go find our own planner kind of thing, or if it's out because we're doing six hours and we need to find eight. Um, and and we wanted to kind of rediscuss with them if there's that possibility. But I do think that having something set for, even if it's six hours, um, a month for a year is going to be a big help.
Six hours a month?
Sorry, a week. No, knowing for 12 months in advance, we're going to have six hours a week and, and that could be flexible, too. You know, we could, we could figure out, you know, whether or not if, if they were doing three hours this week because there was nothing going on, but we needed more hours two weeks away from that because we had, I don't know, a big permit that was coming up. They, they could have that kind of flexibility.
A lot of discussion to be had.
There's a lot of discussion to be had and I think we really need to to start those discussions. But going back to what you said at the beginning, we haven't, we haven't had a full discussion with everybody yet about how they feel about this. So I, I've said what I feel. Chris, Chris said what he kind of thinks. Um, Justin, Brian, Bill, any, any of you want to weigh in on, on moving forward with this or not?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, uh, I think it's definitely something that, uh, that we should do. I, I think if we can try to, uh, make sure that the six hours are spent on those planning skills instead of the clerical administrative skills, um, you know, that would be, uh, that, that would be something to go for.
Yeah, I'm all, I'm, I'm for it. I just feel that, you know, we need more. And, you know, we need that, you get it, like I said, to the, the fathers of the town, the finances and support the, you know, planning board and I just, you know, like to know there's a way to, to add to this in the future. And I'm thinking future, you know, even as soon as July 1, um, if, you know, things can materialize, how can we change? If, you know, things can materialize, how can we change that if? You know, we're able to get our a budget increase for that position. Not knowing this is going to be set up then, but I don't want to be going through negotiations. And then, you know, come July one, the town voted to, you know, support us and we can do ten hours a week that we need.
Yeah, I think some of that stuff is is what we need to kind of figure out and and a part of it's going to depend on when this person starts, right? I mean, if we get this, things worked out sooner than later, let's, let's say that we bring somebody on board in February. And then, you know, our twelve months time is the following February, that's still within the next year's budget to be thinking about what increases looks like. On the other end of this, I think that there's an awful lot that we could be looking at in terms of increased hours on the admin side and and what somebody does with some direction. At least at the beginning, but all of it is more than what we have now.
For so what we've got on the plate right now, yes, I am, I am for it.
Bill?
I'm for that.
All right. So the next steps um in in moving this forward, A, I'm, I will let the board of selectmen know that. We are all in forward, in favor of moving forward. Um, I'm going to resend out to you all a packet with with all of the this current information that I have in it. It will have the current chart with the the max salary and the minimum salary and where that will fall in terms of. Our budget. And how that's going to affect it. It's going to have a list of some of the questions that they're looking to have answered sooner than later. In order to finalize another draft of the intermunicipal agreement. I think in addition to that, I'll circulate a list of. What we're looking for in the planner and 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 what we're needing out of that person and then kind of what we're looking for and what we're needing out of some administrative help. Right now and and continue down the road of trying to figure out if there's, if there's some kind of solution to that, that isn't just. Us taking off chunks of it and and trying to get by for a bit. I think that will be good. I I know with, we're hitting two hours on this meeting just tonight alone and it's tough to think when you're sitting here on camera, too. So I'll make sure that everyone has those questions and if you can think about if you have any thoughts or. Or real feelings about um one of these items, we can discuss it at our meeting on the twenty eighth. And I'll be sure to loop everybody in to when we get another meeting planned with the folks from. The with the the folks involved with this discussion anyway. They're really, what I'm looking at here is that they're, they're looking to try to get the job posted in early January. And I think that that our ability to pull together what we want out of it could either mean that we get to participate or we don't. I'm sure that these folks aren't going to be just waiting around for another several months for us to get. Some feedback over to them.
So they are looking to move forward this fiscal year.
They're looking to move forward now. Their their goal has always been to try to have somebody at the beginning of the year, January or February. This latest, this latest email from last week states that they were really hoping to get a planner that would start in early February. If we could participate in that, that would beat our deadline pretty close anyway. That would give us three weeks without a.
Budgetary wise, are we able to? Go through July from February if they fall into place?
Yeah, if things fall into place, we can do it, but budgetary wise, I don't, what we can't do is continue to to. Extend our contract with CMR PC will be out way sooner than Ju- uh, July. What I can do at our next meeting as well as I'll pull up, I I get the monthly copies of where we're at with the budget and kind of show you where we're at. There's a several other items besides the salary line that we haven't spent, so I think gives us that flexibility that we're looking for right now. To be able to move forward with this. The other piece of this is that um you, we we get a new budget cycle in the middle of it. So I think that's going to help us with our planning. It's going to help us with knowing what we need to go to the finance. Team and the board of selectmen and what we need to ask for in the next fiscal year. But we need to get a, we need to get a real handle on what that request is going to be with some real detail. Because that's what they're going to need in order to give us what we need. All right. Um, does anybody have any other questions or or things you want or you want to talk about related to the shared planner?
Gabe, is there any kind of um? Do you have some, some tips or some recommendations on? Like what we can do to maximize, you know, the the six hours um that we would get from somebody? Like, do you have, you know, definitely have the person focus on X, Y, and Z. A, B, and C, you know, aren't as important and, you know, might be able to be offloaded to either board members or, you know, whatnot?
Yeah, um, I think the big, honestly, out of all the administrative stuff, the big. I think what the big time commitment that ends up. Uh, like, like, I think the the thing that I had to do that has been the biggest time commitment has been sending out notifications for. For hearings because um I I think the last one, the one I did had at least ten of butters and so. Like manually, you have to go to the post office and write out ten, ten envelopes and or, you know, ten of the little certified mail slips and all that. So that is a big use of time. I think if the board is interested in sort of timing that so that. When like it works with the schedule of the shared planner for them to have to send those out. But otherwise, I mean, I have a lot of. I think a lot of the stuff in terms of meetings and um sort of meeting clerical work, I have pretty down in terms, I have like my templates for the. For the agendas and for the uh and for minutes and that sort of thing. And I think that's, I mean, I'd be happy. You know, if, you know, if if someone's hired and I'm out, you know, I'm happy to have a chat with whoever gets hired and talk through what I have and send them any materials I have. To help smooth along that process. But I can't think of anything in particular that, you know, it just sort of, it's all these little things that come up. But I do think probably, I don't know how much, it really also depends on what the board wants in terms of uh customer facing time. I've only been doing this during COVID, so there haven't been people coming to the planning board at town hall asking to see me. And I don't know if that happens in other towns with people who aren't, like, you know, I reach out to other towns, town planners, you know, as part of my job, but. I don't know if, you know, civilians, let's say, are reaching out to, you know, the planning board in person.
Over the last two years, I've seen a huge increase in the amount of requests that come over on email versus the the folks that are stopping by. And that was even before COVID hit.
Right.
But that, so I think that's probably the bigger thing. It's it's weeding through all the emails and figuring out what needs attention and what's something that, you know. How do, how do, how do you handle each one of them?
Exactly.
I I know. Between having Gabe managing the email is like a thorn in my side. Just looking through everything that comes through and making sure it gets attended to.
Right. So, yeah, I think definitely prioritizing remote work for the, so then, you know, they can do their four hours or, you know. If I think they should probably be going in once a week to check mail and at least once a week to check mail and that sort of thing, but. I'm in terms of like prioritizing remote work, so maybe they can stay at in the Menden Town Hall, you know, and doing their work on. On Millville. I think that would be, that would make sense to me. And like Pam said, if 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 we're getting a lot more email communication. I think setting them up well to work remotely so they can access the uh, the town computer. And the files, you know, on a regular basis would also be beneficial to. I haven't, there hasn't been, there hasn't been enough to come up where I felt like I needed to be in the town computer, but, you know, volume is increasing. If there's something they need to get really quickly, that would probably be helpful, too. And again, I'm happy that if someone ends up getting hired, I'm happy to have a chat with them. And try to help them talk through anything administratively.
Any other questions about the shared planner? All right. So keep an eye out on your emails and I'll I'll be sending all of this stuff over probably tomorrow morning. And Gabe, as I look at what our agenda is going to be on the twenty eighth, besides the folks from eighteen Prospect Street, it will be the share.
To interrupt, I have to go off there, calling out the Santrix, so.
Gotcha. Thanks, Brian.
We're good.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. So that just leaves us with Gabe. Uh, any updates pending applications? What do you got?
Um, no new applications beyond um the two things that were, which I wouldn't count as formal applications that that were covered tonight. The uh, this, this letter was addressed to the capital planning committee, um but it passed through the the town planner, just a letter from. From Ryan Fatman, uh, the state senator. Basically, if there's any capital needs to reach out to his office to see if they can help with earmarks, I don't know if that's relevant to the planning board's needs, but um. Might be something to keep in mind. He mentioned. Bridge, you know, two hundred thousand in Blackstone to fix a bridge, one hundred thousand in Dudley for public safety equipment. Um, a hundred fifty thousand Douglas for the purchase of an ambulance. So, you know, potentially if there's. If they, if you guys identify like a big, a big ticket item, that would be, could be someone to reach out to. Um, and then I do have a business certification. For George's Variety on thirty two Central Street. Um, and so like the last couple of times, I just have to approve it. So. That's, that's all good.
Does anybody have any uh questions or comments about George's?
No.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have any reason to.
Reject. Okay, great. And that's it.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions?
No, I think that does it.
All right, I'll be, um, we'll, we'll be shooting for six thirty on the twenty eighth with the two items being. Eighteen Prospect Street and the shared planner discussion. And then maybe we can just add to the list in case the the meeting doesn't, I can't imagine it's going to be short, but I just don't want it to go off our radar. Is to bring back up the the sign by law and I'll I'll redistribute where we left off with that.
Um, I'll reach out to CM, I have a, I'll reach out on a staff meeting tomorrow and see if anyone at CMR PC has any um input on the solar bylaw. I believe there there might have been something else.
Yeah, it was the zoning map that we need.
Yes, yes, zoning map's probably more, a little more important. Um, I'll also ask. I I don't know, whoever helped you with the zoning map, I don't even, they might not even be there anymore, but.
Yeah, and we, I didn't, wasn't involved. I just remember approving the CMR PC hours so that our previous planner could have somebody help her update the zoning map. But I I don't know where it got left off, so if somebody knows, that would be helpful and.
We'll see if we have anything in our, in our computer. But.
Perfect. And if not, maybe what I'd be looking for then is what steps do we need to take in order to get our. Corrected.
Yeah, I was thinking with the limited, sorry, this is, I don't want to get on a tangent, but with the limited hours that a potential shared planner has, I think it might be worth looking into. Some DLTA funding next year, maybe on the solar bylaw. And like the science bylaw could probably be attached to that. And then if if there's any, if depending on the hourage you think is needed for a zoning map. That could, I I don't know what that process would be, but there's probably opportunities to apply for grant funding to, so that you don't, aren't overwhelming a shared planner.
Yeah, that would be amazing. Could you, any advice you could give us on on how to access that would be really helpful?
Yeah, I think the applications have to be, I believe it's around February or March, um, they're coming up, so, but they're all, CMRC is always looking to help towns with DLTA funding. Um, and that'll, that'll basically give you the year to work on this project, so.
Gotcha. Well, thank you. Um, if, if there's nothing else, I'll hear a motion to close the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor? Hi. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great holiday.